Pledge to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first item on our agenda is for the forum, and I now invite anyone from the public who wishes to speak to go up to the microphone.
Just please say your name and address.
Yeah.
Does that work? Does that work okay? I'm Rachel Willer, I live at 26 Maston Drive. It's my very first conference meeting. Thanks for having me. I wrote all of you an email on September 17 regarding the mask ordinance in our town. Unfortunately, I didn't hear back from any of you except Zach Reginald, so he chooses to read my email so my concerns can be heard. Have updated any numbers to be current. Mask ordinance is, I think, item 70 on the agenda tonight? This was my email. I'm writing again to voice my concern about the mask ordinance, ask not to continue it beyond the six days. My two reasons for believing that the mask does not need a law requiring masks, the impact it's having on our residents, the situation our state is in. From my personal experience, I've noticed since the mask ordinance ran into effect, people not looking at each other in town while wearing masks. People on sidewalks literally jumping out of the way when I run by. I'm not running fast, and I'm not scared of them. People from other towns telling me they will not visit New Market businesses while they're wearing masks. And there's a noticeable tension amongst residents. This has changed the sphere in our town in a short six weeks. Secondly, currently, that I know of, as we have changed since April of this, there are no positive cases in New Market, don't worry about it. And furthermore, there are only 22 people in the entire state of New Hampshire, 1.3 million residents, currently hospitalized. That's 0.0016% of the state. This is not nearly statistically significant enough to cause alarm to New Market folks and force us to wear masks. And hospitalizations are truly what we should be avoiding. These numbers are taken directly from the Hirschman Pregnant Health and Human Services website on October 6. I would like to add tonight that the CDC's home website states that the survival rate for COVID is 99.5%. Seventy. In plain language, if someone gets COVID, they have a 99.5% chance of surviving. This is not a number that should be forced in hospitals. Some people choose to continue wearing masks, whether without a mandate, and that's their choice. Either out of fear that the media has driven it to us, or because they just follow the rules, or because of some other reason that's really not a part of this. Some people cannot wear masks due to an autoimmune disorder. Some people cannot wear masks because of COVID. Some people cannot wear masks because they have anxiety with the pandemic. Others still will have a candidate to prepare for any point in a few minutes. I see many of these people in my therapy. They're being made to wear masks. Some people cannot wear masks simply because they cannot read. And this is why. Some people cannot wear masks because wearing one brings back the trauma of sexual abuse. A mask ordinance makes it extremely difficult for these people to do everyday things in our town. I know I hold no rights in this town and I'm perfectly okay with that. But I've lived here for 12 years, and I love to, and I truly cherish my community, and I hope that counts for some time. Please reconsider the ordinance, it's not expired after the six days.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public who wishes to speak?
Evening, Phil. Just hang on.
Yeah.
Really?
Mm-hmm.
All right. All right, evening, Phil. This is our ringling. I'm coming here to tell you I really don't want you to bring up on mask ordinance, and here's why. I'll change it up from last night. So I'm not going to argue numbers. I know the last speaker just gave some numbers, but one I'll throw out there is that 0.36% of our state's population currently has COVID, and that is what we are telling people to mask out against. I'm not going to argue masks have efficacy, because you'll throw studies, and I'll say studies, and we're going to argue another studies. And I'm not going to argue psychological impact that wearing a mask has on young, developing children who are trying to make sense of faces in the world, and they can't see other people's faces. Or, in a world where we have too much othering, and too much people trying to put people in camps, it just gets way easier to other someone who doesn't see your face. We need more connection, not less. What I will bring up today, even though I just brought up those other things, is I question your assumed authority to issue a mask ordinance to private property. I know you have lawyers who said it's okay, and talked through that. I'm pretty sure lawyers in the state of Pennsylvania and the state of Michigan said that they could do what they wanted to do, and those are now come back by federal judges and... What it comes down to is that emergencies do not legislate or allow legislative bodies such as yourself unlimited powers. So to assume you have that power, as well intentioned as it is, I think is misguided. And finally, I just want to say, think about the precedent you continue to set. Look, people don't sit on these bodies forever. And you can turn around and have a bunch of people up here who think very differently than you, and could use the precedent you are setting for very different reasons. You are setting and continuing to set a precedent that a legislative body of this town could tell, have tell a private business owner that they cannot serve someone if they do not do a certain thing. Imagine the worst possible political individual, seven of them sitting on this body, and what they might do with that precedent. I know that this is very well intentioned by everyone, and I just get very concerned about the unintended consequences that will come from this. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public who wishes to speak tonight? Seeing none, I will close public comment at 7:07. The next item on our agenda is the, for the town council to consider acceptance of minutes, and the first meeting minutes for us to consider is September 16, 2020, regular meeting minutes, and I would accept a motion to approve those minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from September 16, 2020.
I will second that motion.
Are there any questions? We're doing this the old-fashioned way in case anybody missed that announcement earlier, so if you have any questions or comments, just let me know. Any changes? Seeing none, if you could call the roll, please.
Council Sanders.
Aye.
Council Dumont.
Aye.
Council Kuiper.
Aye.
Council Braybeck.
Aye.
Council Burns.
Aye.
Council Weinstein.
Aye.
Motion passes 6-0.
The next meeting minutes that we have are September 16, non-public meeting minutes.
I will make a motion to approve the September 16, 2020, non-public meeting minutes.
I'll second that.
Any questions or changes? Seeing none, if you could call the roll.
Council Sanders.
Aye.
Council Dumont.
Aye.
Council Kuiper.
Aye.
Council Braybeck.
Aye.
Council Burns.
Aye.
Council Weinstein.
Aye.
Motion passes 6-0.
And the next item is the town manager's report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The first item in my, that's not written in my report, is that we've heard back from the Southeastland Trust that they've been working with the Epping Portion to secure funding for the Epping Portion of an easement for the, I didn't write down the name of the property, but it's-
Clerk.
Blackstone property, thank you. If you remember, there was concerns over part, originally when we were going to purchase the easement, that there's portion of it in Epping, and we asked for them to approach Epping to pay for their portion of the easement, in which they have, there's 175 acres, and 150 are in the town of New Market. The price that we originally were going to have was reduced from 90,000 to 75,000, and the remaining will be coming from Epping, so I just wanted to let the council be aware of that. And just to go over some dates that are coming up, October 24 at 9:00 a.m., just a reminder, on Saturday, is the budget workshop that usually lasts until 1:00 or 2:00 p.m. in the afternoon. And Wednesday at 6:00 p.m., which will be virtually, would be a joint meeting between the planning board and the town council on Zoom. We just don't have a facility to fit all of both boards in one location, so that will be going on that day. In my RIT report, as some of you may be aware, the emergency management team and the recreation director has met to discuss trick-or-treat in town. After hearing presentations from the municipal association and receiving guidance from the services and the CDC, we have determined that with a low number of cases in town, we will move forward with the scaled-back trick-or-treat. It will be held as tradition on Friday, October 30, from 5:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. Masks will be required in accordance with the current town mask ordinance for those participating in Halloween. Parents are encouraged to monitor strictly enforced social distancing, six feet apart, and frequent hand sanitizing. Costume masks cannot replace an otherwise COVID-19 used face covering. Claus masks are encouraged to replace the costume mask. Families should stay together and not integrate with other families. Congregating is highly discouraged. We're also discouraging people to, from inviting people from other communities into New Market that evening. Households wishing to not participate should not participate. They may turn their outside lights off or otherwise leave signage on their door that they're not participating. People should not approach their homes that have their lights off. And those choosing to participate in handing out candy should wear face covering and should wash their hands frequently. We issued more guidelines on the town website, and it'll be going out in the town newsletter. And we'll also be monitoring the number of cases. As for whatever reason, there is a spike later on in the month of October, we will review the situation to possibly cancel the trick-or-treat at that time. In addition, the recreation department is looking at doing a bare bones, no pun intended, version of the Halloween haunt, and they will be announcing that shortly. The next item is on the agenda for tonight for your review, is an extension of the mandatory mask ordinance. In accordance with Town Ordinance Section 12-12, Emergency Powers and Duties, I submitted to the town clerk an emergency order effective last Monday at 12:01 a.m. to extend the town's mandatory mask ordinance until the council acts on either rescinding or extending the ordinance at its next regular meeting, which is tonight. The ordinance was to sunset on Monday if the order was not in place, and I felt it was up to the council to make the decision to let it sunset, and that's the reason why I continued on with the ordinance. Just an update from the Sunrise Sunset Center. With cold weather quickly approaching, the recreation department will begin to invite Sunrise Sunset members inside the center, starting in October, utilizing only the large function room to offer safe and social distance programs and activities. COVID guidelines that they plan, we plan to follow as listed below. I just want to, I mean, I'm not going to go through all of them. Some of the programs that will be run while maintaining social distances will be bingo, craft club, book club, music groups, and Tuesday's talks. Basically, no more participants in any group to be able to make sure they have a six-by-eight foot area that they can be safely distanced. And they'll also be holding them on Mondays, Tuesdays, and Wednesdays. And bingo will be offered three times weekly, and cover 40 members that play bingo, so it's staggered with different members. And of course, they'll have to follow the correct protocols, including wearing a mask, but if they're within their bubble like people are tonight, they'll be able to take their mask off. But I just thought it was a great thing to hear, that they are moving forward and trying to get seniors back. Just an update on the McAllen Dam project. You probably noticed that that's going on. I get daily updates, just as of September 30, the water level at the dam gates was approximately the maximum drawdown level, a valuation of 15.2 feet. The construction was utilized and still are, used in crane to lure steel beams, and crane mapped down to the concrete spillway in preparation for the installation of the cofferdam. And they've already installed some of the retaining walls and the concrete staircase wall to the existing concrete patio. And I just put some pictures in the report for the council to see. I get daily pictures and updates on that as well. As the council is aware, the superintendent of schools has a memorandum of understanding for the shared facilities director. The major changes are that the position will now be a school employee, and that after the first year, we determine how we pay for the position by the number of hours they work for each entity. I attach the copy of the memorandum of understanding to my report for your review, and I'll have the councils approve on a future meeting. And under the ongoing project, at the next meeting, I'm going to have an individual from a parking enforcement company, otherwise known as meters, coming to talk to the town council about how we would be used, we could possibly use meters to turn over parking in the downtown. As you're all aware, one of the number one things we hear is a lack of parking in the downtown area. But prior to creating a garage or parking deck, we should look at other ways to turn over parking quicker, one of which would be possibly installing meters. And it's not foreign to the town of New Market. We do have a picture from the late 50s, early 60s, with meters on Main Street. So we cannot have the argument that New Market has never had meters. But that's just to hear one proposal that the police chief has, and that's all I have tonight, Madam Chair.
When did you say we'll have that presentation?
The next regular meeting.
Okay, thank you. All right. The next item of business is committee reports. Does anyone have a committee report?
Oh, sorry.
Oh, sorry. Oh, sorry. Yeah, if there are any questions for the town manager.
I just wanted to ask a Steve clarifying question. The Clark property, was that the farm that's like divided by the road? We-
Yes.
Okay. Sorry, I wasn't able to place that. And then Fort Dam, are we moving on track to be completed in time, or have they encountered any unsuspecting issues? I know some folks were asking about that, but it looks like it's all been going well, so.
Yeah, it looks, I mean, like with any project of this size, there always issues pop up. Everything seems to be going as planned, and as of right now, there's no delays. Luckily, we, luckily on our part, that we didn't have a lot of rain. So that helped out in the situation. However, as everybody knows, October is the month that you get hit with rain. So they're trying to wrap up as much as possible.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments for the town manager? I just wanted to follow up on one thing, actually, from our last meeting, and that was, where's my notes? The turning over of South Main Street from the state, is there any, are there any updates on that?
Yeah, we have the, our insurance, our insurance, our engineering company, one of the items that I'm- is the railroad bridge, that if we were to accept it, we also accept the railroad bridge. So I'm asking, we've gotten all the bridge reports from the state, and have our engineering firm review it, as well as do a site inspection to make sure there's going to be no surprises if we were to take it over.
Thank you. So seeing no other questions or comments, committee reports. Are there any committee reports? Quiet. I will say that the Energy and Environment Committee met last night, and really, the focus, I think, of our meeting was this electric aggregate committee that we also are serving as. And so one of our members, the chair, Peter Nelson, has put together thorough database of solar projects that have happened in the community, as well as has reached out to Eversource and gotten some data through Eversource that he is in the process of sorting through. And that was, that was really the biggest topic of conversation that we had from the Energy and Environment Committee. Seeing no other committee reports, we'll move on to old business, and so we have some resolutions in the second reading. And the first is Resolution 2020, 2021-07, the wastewater treatment plant Tideflex diffuser replacement, and I would accept a motion to approve that resolution.
I will make a motion to approve Resolution 2020, 2021-07, the Tideflex valve.
All right, we'll second that.
Hi, Sean.
Hi, thanks for having me. Back in 2000, the wastewater treatment plant put in a mandatory, EPA put in an outfall pipe to convey the water back into the environment. It actually has 20 Tideflex diffusers, and what they are, they're about two to three feet tall. They're just like a T. As the pressure builds up, they open up and they close. So they evenly disperse the water back into the environment to have the least impact on the environment. Two years ago, actually, 2018, we had a major rain event, which we had peak flow at the end and backed up into the plant. Sent down a diver, we found out that 12 out of the eight, 12 out of the 20 were not working properly. We pulled one from the, from the outfall pipe. We inspected it. We had found that the materials on the pinch valves are hardening up. We consulted Tideflex, who is the manufacturer of the valves, and they recommend that if they get replaced, that they're reaching their, have, most of them reach their useful life. So it's something we have to do. I received the price for a total of $29,000 to get those 20 new Tideflex valves here. The plan would be to get them, store them, and install them at the next possible chance that we can get them by a dive.
Any questions? Council Dumont.
Yeah, I just had a quick one. I did a little research on these, because I was just curious to know what they were. And I know when we did the tour, the plan had talked about them. I just didn't quite realize how massive they were.
Pretty big.
And I'm kind of curious, do you think that the backup that you experienced in 2018 either caused the problems that you're having now, or do you think those are just a result of ongoing deteriorations?
It's the materials are stiffening up.
And we expect in general, maybe 20 years is the maximum life on them?
There wasn't a lot of, we were one of the first ones to have them, so there wasn't a lot of rust on them.
Okay.
Also, we're in brackish water.
Yeah.
Which has a little bit more impact on the materials than if you were in like a freshwater. So I think 20 years is probably the life limit.
Yeah. It seemed like a good price, no questions, no concerns there, but I appreciate the additional info.
Any other questions? Seeing none, if you could call the roll, please.
Council Sanders.
Aye.
Council Dumont.
Aye.
Council Kuiper.
Aye.
Council Braybeck.
Aye.
Council Burns.
Aye.
Council Weinstein.
Aye.
Motion passes 6-0.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Sean, do they use divers? Is that how they'll, they need to be repla, like how does that, what's the process?
A diver goes down. We'll take one off at a time and put it on. It's very difficult, because the water's so brackish, it's difficult to see down and follow.
It's got to be quite a process.
It is a little bit.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks.
No, no, she wasn't volunteering for that either.
Yeah. No, it's got to be quite, I don't know, a very specific skill, I think. So the next item that we have is Resolution 2020, 2021-08, authorize the town manager to sign and enter into with the SAU 31 for property depicted on Appendix B, tax map lot 42, designated as Leo Landrosch Field Complex.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2020, 2021-08, enter into a lease with the SAU 31.
I will second that.
Is there, yeah.
I'll discuss.
Thank you.
As the council may be aware, we've been trying to build a splash pad at the Leo Landrosch Field. However, one of the things that a lot of council realize is that we do not own the land. It's owned by the school. We lease it. Part of the grant that we're receiving from the land and water conservation funding is that we must enter into a lease at 25 years plus, renewing every 10 years in perpetuity, lease with the school to make sure that that piece of land will be used for recreation and for the splash pad. And so that's what this lease is. The cost of the lease is a dollar annually. I don't know when you actually get the dollar, but, but that's the way we're recommending this, and then we can begin to move forward with our splash pad.
Any questions? I, every time that we get a little bit further with this project, it's very exciting, so. Do we think that this summer?
Yeah.
At this point? Good. That's great. So seeing no other comments, if you could call the roll.
Council Sanders.
Aye.
Council Dumont.
Aye.
Council Kuiper.
Aye.
Council Braybeck.
Aye.
Council Burns.
Aye.
Council Weinstein.
Aye.
Motion passes 6-0.
Okay, under new business, we have some nominations to consider. The first would be town councillor candidates, and we have, we have three candidates, one of whom has withdrawn their name, so we still have two, and that's Ned Carpenter and Scott Blackstone. And I would like to, we'll just talk for a minute about the process. And we just went through this not that long ago, so it should be fresh in everyone's mind. But we will, I will invite each of the candidates to say a few words, and we can ask any questions that you might have for the candidates here. And then we will vote on which candidate we prefer by saying their, the candidate's name. So it would be either, you know, Carpenter or Blackstone, and assuming, well, one way or another, we'll have. There's not an, oh no, there is an even number of us. Oh, so there could be a tie, but we'll face that. We'll cross that bridge when we get to it, if we get to it. So that's what we'll do. So I will, I'm just going to go alphabetically to make life easy, and I will start with Scott Blackstone. So Scott, if you would like to introduce yourself and say a few words.
Good evening. So I was here before, so I'll tell you something different. I have a PhD in physics. I started a company that I took public, and I took most of the earnings, and I put five of my kids, all my kids to college, which is quite fascinating. I have worked, I've run a number of small, I've run companies, big and small, from publicly traded to really tiny. I've been involved in a lot of business, and so, for instance, I know a lot about contract law, I know a lot about employment law. So I worked with the school board to hire their current business administrator, and I was able to point out to them that several of the interview questions they were writing were actually in writing were actually in English. Well, I mean, you don't really got to know this stuff.
Right.
And so, I've also lived, meaning house address bills, in Belgium, in the UK, in Ireland, and in the Czech Republic. And I've spent a lot of time in Japan and China. So I have a broad view of the world. Thank you.
Thank you. Did anyone have any questions? I just have one. And that is something that came up last time, when we went through this process, is, you know, so this, this position will only go through March. And so, my, and Counsel Matthews was really very good about bringing this issue up, and he's missed. But my question to you is, are you interested in pursuing a position past the March?
Yes.
Great.
Yeah. I currently serve, as I told you about, as a trustee of trust fund. I've been a trustee of trust fund in a town called Alton where I used to live. And I participated for the school board selection. So I'm, you know, I have a history.
Thank you. And then, I'm assuming you're Ned Carpenter?
Good assumption, yeah. I'm Ned Carpenter. I don't have a resume like that. I have lived in Newmarket for about two and a half years now. I, I think I wrote a letter, I'm not sure that all of you read it, that was pretty extensive, but probably was a little long. We did, I tend to get like that sometimes. But my history in New Hampshire goes back to the mid-eighties when I went to come to state. Found the love of the place, and unfortunately, over the past 30 years, was taken away to several other states. Met my wife in North Jersey. We started our family there. We have two children, 25-year-old, almost, she'll be 25 in November, and a 21-year-old who's a senior in college at James Madison University of Virginia. And once our kids got out of high school, it was decided that we wanted to get back to New England, where we had lived for about 10 years in my career with Janu parts company, which is what you guys know as now Auto Parts on the distribution side of the business. Through the course of years with Janu parts company, I started in sales and managed, got quickly progressed into some management roles, learned how to manage small groups and large groups of people. Left Janu parts company to move back to New England, because we really wanted to get back to a more sane geography, if you will, than North Jersey. We, we came here about two and a half years ago. I found a career opportunity. I currently work for Armar, Refreshment Services, I'm the general manager of New England States. And manage a fairly large people, although it's considerably smaller now, unfortunately. Over the past six or seven months, it's been a very difficult time to manage through, but we've managed to make it, make it through it. And over the past 25 years since my kids were born, our kids were born, I've been involved in just about everything that I could possibly get involved with, my wife and I both, trying to stay involved with the kids, as well as contribute to the, to the establishments that they were involved in, whether that be local sports, dance shows, music recitals, you know, high school athletics. We currently serve on the parents' council for James Madison University. We're one of about 140 families that serve on the council as parent liaisons that represent the school in amongst the communities that we live, and to the university of about 22,000 students. So I think as I read, as I wrote in my letter, for me, it's, it's just about service. It's, it's about the right time for me. My experiences and the things that I can offer, they're not necessarily political in nature, organizational for sure. But, you know, the time is right, I have the time in my life, and I've always felt like if you can, if you can, you should. So if the town has me, I'd be happy to serve. Any questions?
Thank you. Any questions?
And yes, I would.
I was going to ask that.
Yes.
Thanks.
Anything?
Nope.
Thanks.
We've been in a position in the past with our regular elections where we haven't had candidates. And so it's, this is our second process where we've had to appoint a candidate, and we've had multiple applicants. And that's, it's exciting to see, actually. I think that it's, it's really pretty fabulous to have people who are interested in serving on all of our boards. And obviously, we can only pick one individual, but I will say that there will be coming in, when we have our elections in March, we will have two three-year positions and two, two-year positions. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah, they're both two-year. So, so there are opportunities, for sure. There are certainly other boards and committees in town also that are always looking for people to step up and serve. So with that said, if, are there any other, is there any other conversation, or any other comments for, that the councillors wanted to make?
Comment. I just want to thank you both for putting your name in tonight to, you know, take this position. I really appreciate that, and look forward to you, whoever, or both of you actually running in for March. I just want to thank you for coming out and doing that. It's going to be tough again.
So seeing no other comments?
Just a reminder, councillors will state the last name of the preferred candidate when I call your name. Counsel Sanders.
Blackstone.
Counsel Dumas.
Blackstone.
Counsel Kuiper.
Blackstone.
Counsel Braybeck.
Carpenter.
Counsel Burns.
Blackstone.
Counsel Weinstein.
Blackstone.
Blackstone wins five to one.
Thank you.
Counsel Blackstone would like to sit this evening. I can run upstairs, get the oath of office, and you can take your oath right now. Okay. Let me just run upstairs and get the oath, and I'll be signing. So we can recess for a minute.
I hope we see you in March.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Second times in Germany. I don't know if you noticed, but I'm wearing my Camilla sneakers.
Oh, nice.
Are we going to be done by eight?
Debate doesn't start till nine.
Oh, it's at nine?
Debate's at nine. You've got plenty of time.
I have a hard time with these nine o'clock things.
I hear ya.
Right?
I've been doing debate watch stuff for UNH, so we'll like all get on Zoom, but I'm like normally I would just like watch stuff the next day, but I'm like, okay, at nine, I'm starting something, and I need to have like college-level energy about it. It's hard. Rough.
Just got to choke up the TV.
Yeah, get on the tape level.
Level the playing field.
Raise your right hand. If you have, aye, say your name. I'm Blackstone. Have you bracketed? Do you solemnly swear? That we're faithful? How we're faithful? And, and true allegiance?
True allegiance.
To the United States of America?
United States of America.
And the state of New Hampshire?
State of New Hampshire.
It will support the Constitution thereof.
It will support.
So I'll be gone. Aye, state your name.
Aye, state your name.
Of Newmarket?
Of Newmarket.
Do you solemnly and sincerely swear and affirm that I faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties incumbent on me as a member of the town council, according to the abilities of the rules and regulation of this constitution, the laws of the state of New Hampshire?
Laws of the state of New Hampshire.
And the articles of the Newmarket Town Charter?
And the articles of the Newmarket Town Charter.
So I'll be gone. Congratulations.
Thank you.
That is a decent amount. And you can sit.
I can.
Okay, you want to do that?
Sign. Very. I'll go first.
We just hope nobody else thinks about leaving in the next three, four months.
No. No. I'm going to chain you to this, in this auditorium.
I was going to say, I recently learned our backyard touch.
Seriously?
I believe so.
Aren't there, are there greenhouses?
Yeah, but the greenhouse. Very exciting.
Do you know my son, Yash?
No.
Well, thank you and welcome. And we're going to just put you right there in the, in it. So our next item is for Al Zink, and he has an application to the ZBA. And I would accept a motion to approve that application.
I'll make a motion to approve Al Zink as an alternate position to the ZBA.
Second.
Any comments? I will make a comment, and that is, it's, I think it's always, it's, it's great when everyone serves, and it's really great when someone who has served in multiple capacities kind of continues to stay involved. And so Al, you saw his application has, he was two terms on the council, he served on the school board for two terms, he was on the CIP, I mean, he's on the budget committee. So he's really a great person to, a lot of institutional knowledge. So thank you, Al. And with that, I would, if you could call the roll, please.
Counsel Sanders.
Aye.
Counsel Dumas.
Aye.
Counsel Kuiper.
Aye.
Counsel Braybeck.
Aye.
Counsel Blackstone.
Aye.
Counsel Burns.
Aye.
Counsel Weinstein.
Aye.
Motion passes seven, zero. Madam Chair, before we take up the next one, actually, no, we're okay. I was, I was concerned one of the answers of no on the application, next nominee, but it's not a, it's not an statutory committee, so it's fine.
Okay. I did notice that.
Yeah.
The next item is for Anders Holm, and that he's an applicant to the Energy and Environment Committee, and I would accept a motion to approve that application.
I'll make a motion to approve the application for Anders Holm to the Energy and Environment Committee.
I'll second that.
Any questions or comments about Anders? Yes.
I just wanted to say, I noticed on Mr. Holm's application that it says that he's only been a resident here at Newmarket for one year. I really appreciate when new residents step up like that. It is really inspiring and helpful, and I hope to see more of that. So I just wanted to highlight that fact.
Great. And I think, I could be wrong, I think we have one more position on the Energy and Environment Committee. So if anybody out there is interested in applying, we need you. So with that, if you could call the roll, please.
Counsel Sanders.
Aye.
Counsel Dumas.
Aye.
Counsel Kuiper.
Aye.
Counsel Braybeck.
Aye.
Counsel Blackburn.
Blackstone.
Blackstone, sorry. Sorry. New, thank you. Counsel Burns.
Aye.
Counsel Weinstein.
Aye.
Motion passes seven, zero.
And, oh, sorry.
Before we move on to the next business, the Arts and Tourism Committee still has two openings. If anybody would like to join us, that'd be fabulous.
Great, thank you. Resolutions in the first reading, and so we have two this evening. And the first is Resolution 2020, 2021, sorry. And that's the purch, or dash oh nine, and that's the purchase of two LifePak 15 monitors defibrillators. Whereas the fire department needs to replace two LifePak 15 monitors defibrillators. And whereas the department obtained a proposal from Stryker, which is a sole source, to purchase two LifePak 15 monitor defibrillators at 50% off for a total of $36,730. And whereas, the ambulance revolving fund has a balance of $111,432 as of September 29th, 2020. Now therefore be it resolved by the Newmarket Town Council that the town manager is authorized to purchase two LifePak 15 monitors defibrillators for a price not to exceed $36,730 from the ambulance revolving fund, first reading October 7th, 2020. And then the second item is ordinance number two. Do I read this?
You do not have to.
Okay.
You can ask if there's no objection, just to read it by title.
So I will read the title, and then I'll see. Emergency ordinance number two, 2020, 2021, and ordinance reaffirming requiring the wearing of face coverings under certain conditions within the town of Newmarket. And is there any objection to reading it in title only?
Madam Chair, since this is an emergency ordinance, it does not require a second reading, so it would be appropriate this evening to accept this motion in a second, if you would like to act on it this evening.
So I would accept a motion to approve ordinance, emergency ordinance two, 2020, 2021.
I'll make a motion to approve emergency ordinance number two, 2020, 2021.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Any, what, did you want?
Just a quick, procedurally, it is exactly the same ordinance that was adopted 61 days ago. It's just to reaffirm it for an additional 61 days. By charter, you're only allowed to do it for 61 days. Some municipalities do it, it's an emergency order, but we do not have that authority here, so we'll have to be doing it every 61 days.
Just a quick question to clarify. Ours, if the governor, if the emergency order were to expire, does this expire? Did, I forget how it, I know we talked about that.
I had this question last night, too.
Yeah. And I just can't remember.
You would have to repeal it.
Okay. Okay.
Just to let you know, the odds out of the emergency orders will continue until such time as there's, according to the governor, there's a vaccine, or there's a vast change in the pandemic. The reason why the emergency orders continue is, one of the big things is funding, because during emergency orders, you're allowed to apply to federal funding, so that's why.
Any comments? Counsel Kuiper.
Do you know if the chief of police has, or if any of the officers have written any tickets?
We have not.
They have not?
No.
Okay. I personally would say that the point at which I would vote to not continue the mass ordinance would be the point at which I would say like, maybe every town surrounding Newmarket and Newmarket had no cases for, maybe 21 days. I mean, giving a time limit to some of this doesn't really make sense. I mean, it does, I mean, I know we're going to do that anyway. My point is just that I think we should look at the statistics. There's a number of cases of Durham right now. And speaking on behalf of the restaurant employees of Newmarket, I would say, I mean, I always guess for all of them, but I would guess they would all appreciate this ordinance, because they don't have the choice of whether or not they go to work every day. They need to work, they need to make money, and it's really not fair that people walk in without wearing a mask, for these people that have to be there. And speaking proudly as a restaurant owner, I can't afford to have my employees getting run right now. I can't afford to close for another two weeks or a month, or however long. And if wearing a mask is going to put me even 20%, you know, closer to that, I will do that, and I will vote in this ordinance based on, based on that. And I don't know about anyone else, but I go through town every day, pretty much, I walk through town every day, and there does not seem to be any problems. If you wear a mask... They wear masks when they need to, when they're right in front of, pretty much the only time when you're outside is when you're right in front of the big beam. You know, when there's a club. And other than that, I haven't had any issues. I mean, we had a couple of people coming to the restaurant and say, oh, shoot, I forgot my mask. You know, and sometimes I literally call from the front door and I'll open the door and hand them food. I mean, no one's calling the police. I don't think anyone's, like we just said, no one's getting arrested for not wearing a mask. And I just, I think that I will continue to vote for this as long as we do not have a safe situation for our, the employees that have to, the people that work in town that have to deal with the public. You know, it's one thing when you work from home. When people that work from home tell me that they shouldn't have to wear a mask, I find that infuriating. You know, you have the choice. You get to work from home, what a privilege, you know? Me and my employees do not have that, do not have that privilege. We have to work. We have to deal with the public. And for that, I thank everyone who is wearing masks and, yeah, I will be voting for this ordinance again.
Thank you. Councillor Brabec.
I just have a question for the town manager. If we have any active cases in Newmarket currently? I believe last I heard it was one to four.
Please continue to have one to four.
Thank you.
I'd like to point out that it's not just the people who have COVID. It's also people who've recovered, who have now permanent lung damage and are at risk of catching anything, a cold, pneumonia, the flu, and cannot always live their life locked in their bedrooms. I wear a mask to protect you and also to protect the people I love at home. So I will also be voting to extend this mask ordinance tonight.
I also just wanted to ask, is, are, the schools are still requiring masks currently? And do we have any end date in our knowledge to that? Okay. I know last time that there was discussion around wanting to match what the kids in school were having to do to avoid confusion. Thank you.
I would just, my stance hasn't changed since 61 days ago. And I'm, I absolutely support this ordinance. I also just wanna, I think it's important to point out the, where they're required and where they're not. And, and one of the items, it's in, it's in item four, is members of the public utilizing sidewalks and other pedestrian public recreational lands or golf courses are strongly encouraged, but not required, to wear a face covering to the fullest extent practicable. I think that that's really important. We are, have not mandated that people need to wear masks on the sidewalks. It's just, it's just not the case. It's really about going into businesses. So I think that it's an important clarification for people to understand. It doesn't mean that we don't strongly suggest that people wear face coverings on the sidewalks because I think that that's important where there are people gathered. I know like I walk on the rail trail and I do not typically wear a mask while I'm exercising. There's, there's almost always, I'm able to maintain a six-foot distance. So, so that's, that's not the mandate. The mandate is to protect people in closed spaces where they cannot be six feet apart. So are there any other comments?
No, this does mean that it would, if we pass this again tonight, that it is mandatory in public buildings such as the town hall, the school, election day at the polls.
Yes.
Election day falls under the rules that if you do not wish to wear a mask on the election day, we will provide you with an alternative location to vote. Because we cannot, we cannot deny somebody the right to vote.
Correct. And there will be those that will be made available.
Town, public buildings are, if you're, if you visited a public building, you must wear a mask. Employees must wear masks in public areas. You're allowed to remove their masks in situations where they're six feet away from other individuals, i.e. if I'm in my office, I don't need to wear a mask because no one's coming near me in my office. So if you see people not wearing one, that's why.
Councillor Dumont.
Just curious, I'm not sure if you counted it out. Does 61 days from now fall a couple of days short of another meeting or like a week short?
I have not, but I will bet many it does. So I'll probably have to do the same thing.
All right, just curious.
And since we adopted this, two other communities have, already Durham had adopted one right before us. And two other of our neighboring communities. So Exeter has adopted a mask ordinance and so has Portsmouth. Just so people are aware. And Durham, yeah, Durham already had. Yep.
I just wanted to, while we were talking about election day, just remind the public absentee is always still an option and that whether that can be done by mail or dropping off the ballot here at town hall. But there is another alternative if you don't want to wear a mask on election day. You don't have to, but you can also vote absentee.
Thank you. So.
Just to let everybody know, this will be resented on December 7th. So you have a meeting on the second.
So can we re, okay, yeah. Knew what I was gonna ask.
Yep.
Seeing no other question or comments, if you could call the roll, please.
Councillor Sanders.
Aye.
Councillor Dumont.
Aye.
Councillor Kuiper.
Aye.
Councillor Brabec.
Aye.
Councillor Blackstone.
Aye.
Councillor Burns.
Aye.
Councillor Weinstein.
Aye.
Motion passes six to one. Madam Chair.
Thank you, yes.
I also have for the council to sign the warrant for the general election. So after the meeting, I'll place them on a table. If everybody has their own pen, I'll place them next to each other. You have to sign three copies just so we can have the warrant for people to come vote.
And then are there any closing comments? Councillor Kuiper.
I just wanted to thank the police chief and his officers for their diligent work in working the parking downtown. They've been out chalking the cars a lot more. And it was kinda cool. I was out there with my son a couple of days ago and hanging out front of Cracks Balls. And, you know, the police officer was there with the chalk. He's talking to my son and he was talking to a couple of people. And, I mean, beyond the whole moving of the cars every two hours thing, it was just kinda nice to like talk to him for a second and get the face to face. And, you know, it made me feel like our town is, you know, a little bit different than I think maybe the whole other places in the country in that our relationship with the police, in that I feel comfortable with them. And, you know, it just kinda happened to be something that when they are chalking cars, they're hanging around downtown, which I felt was nice. And I just wanted to make sure that they got a thumbs up from me on that.
That's nice to hear. I agree. I think it's, I think it was quite a few meetings ago at this point. I had asked the town manager and I think, I think our police chief was here at the time because I saw a police officer walking downtown and I thought that maybe they were trying to do some more community interactions, but I think maybe he was just going to get lunch. But it is nice and it's sort, and it's just sort of, it's different. It's almost surprising to see a police officer just sort of walking downtown. I mean, that's just not the norm anymore. You know? So I think that we do, do a really great job here in, in Newmarket. So any other comments? Closing comments? I just want to reiterate what Councillor Brabec said. We will have another meeting prior to, or we're gonna have a couple of meetings actually prior to election day. But just to let people know that there are options for voting. If you have any concerns about, about COVID or if you are sick, you can certainly vote absentee. And we, not only can you, but we're encouraging people to vote absentee to not just protect, not just to protect the individuals voting, but to protect the volunteers who are working at, at the polling locations. And also a reminder that polling locations, we have, we have two wards this, this election. They are different than they were in the primary. I think that that's important too, that people know. I mean, luckily, everything's pretty, in a pretty small geographic location. But it will be at the high school and at the elementary, at the elementary school. The high school is Ward one and the elementary school is Ward two. And the lists for what streets are, in which ward are available on the town website. So that's the only comment that I had. I noticed that we didn't have any correspondences on this, our agenda, but we don't have any correspondence. So our, our next regular council meeting is the 21st of October. But we, as the town manager mentioned, next, so a week from today, we have a joint meeting with the planning board at 6:00 PM via Zoom. And then again, we have our October 24th, Saturday budget meeting, October 24th at nine o'clock. And two other items I wanted to mention. Again, welcome to Scott. Thank you for joining us. If you have any questions, I'm, obviously you guys will connect. And anything that I can get you up to speed on, you can reach out to any of the council and we will do our best. So Steve's probably the best person to, for the specifics, but we can also help. And then I also just wanted to say congratulations to Councillor Dumont and your impending nuptials this weekend.
Oh, congratulations. Yes, it is Saturday, so got a lot of stuff.
It's an understatement.
Yes, exactly. I did just want to ask, to assume we're gonna do council, committee assignments at our next council meeting now that we're back to Saturday.
Yeah. So seeing no other comments, I will consider us adjourned. Thank you. And don't forget to sign.
Yep, I'm gonna put them right here.